One for one short. Oh, he's coming. Hang on. He's, you know, he likes to make grand entrance.
Seven seconds.
We're good then. Right? I said.
Ten seconds.
We're good. Hey, listen, I walked in here one time.
Well, now Commissioner Rippon, Meatloaf said two out of three bad. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the August 26, 2021 meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for Shawnee County. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair this year, also representing District Two. Joining us this morning is Commissioner Bill Rippon, representing District One. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Aaron Mays, representing District Three. Good morning.
Morning.
Madam Clerk, we've got a full agenda, so let's get started.
First item is item three, Consent Agenda.
There are three items on the Consent Agenda. Is there a questions or a motion?
A move to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Commissioner May, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item four, new business. A county clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
Commissioners, this morning we have vouchers totaling $6,889,915.09. Three things on there I want to highlight. One, under pooled cash, debt service, 911 telephone, event center, and lease purchase projects to the Security Bank of Kansas City totaling $5,821,281.79 is for COP and PVC interest, principal, and agent fee payments. Under sewer districts to the city of Topeka totaling $126,363.89 is for the second quarter operation and maintenance of sewer districts two, six, sixty-five, and Sherwood. And then also to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for $21,035.67 is a loan payment for the Sherwood pump station improvements. I don't have any questions about any of this. I move for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays, second. Second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item A two, consider correction orders.
I'll move for approval, second. Motion for approval by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B, Health Department, number one, consider approval of request to fill the part-time advanced practice registered nurse position with a candidate at classified range 22 step 10 for an annual salary and benefits of $58,415.20 to be paid with grant funding.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director with the Health Department. As the clerk read, we are ready to fill our advanced practice registered nurse position in our family planning program. This is a new program. We tried to get it off the ground last year. We are committed to getting it off the ground this year, even in the midst of COVID. We interviewed several candidates, and the particular candidate of choice has literally decades of experience in women's health. We feel she is more than qualified for this position. We'll really be ready to walk in, and other than learning our electronic medical record, we'll be ready to help us get this program off the ground. I worked with HR and Audit Finance, and we do have this in our budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. I'll move for approval. Motion for approval by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B two, consider approval of request to fill a licensed practical nurse position at a salary including benefits of $54,476.65 to be paid by grant funding and to fill any subsequent position which may become vacant from filling this position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director with the Health Department. This particular licensed practical nurse position is due to a retirement that we had recently. This position works at our 10th Street Clinic and works at our immunization program, our TB program, and then will also help work in our new family planning program. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Is it hard to fill these positions for nurses right now?
I don't know yet. We hopefully will be able to find somebody that is looking to either make a change or maybe a new graduate that's entering the workforce. So we'll do what we can to recruit these positions.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rippon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B three, consider approval of request to fill a vacant dietitian position for the Women, Infant, and Children's Program at a salary including benefits of $71,259.70 to be paid with the WIC grant and to fill any subsequent positions which may become vacant from filling this position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director with the Health Department. This registered dietitian position is recently vacated due to a resignation. As the clerk stated, this works in our Women, Infants, and Children's Program, serving our pregnant and postpartum moms that are eligible and our children zero to five, so they do nutrition assessments and certify them for the WIC program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? I'll move for approval, second. Motion for approval by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item. Thank you.
Item C, Human Resources, number one, consider approval of request to post and fill a payroll assistant position at a starting salary including benefits of $53,626.24 and fill any position, subsequent position which may become vacant due to filling this position.
Good mornings, Commissioners. Angela Lewis with Human Resources. We do have the one position for payroll assistant that was requested on the agenda. We would like to add a second that would need to be filled for payroll.
I understand that you recently had a second due to other opportunities in the job market that the payroll assistant left for private employment?
Yes.
And the question that Commissioner Rippon asked earlier about us to nurses, what is your anticipation and ability to fill these two positions with the county?
Well, it will be difficult. You can go anywhere, any place, and people need help. We have plenty of positions open in the county now to in my office. But as I look around this room, I see positions opened in almost every department that we have. Tim needs positions. We had a hard time with lifeguards this summer. Kurt has probably 10, 15 positions that he needs filled in Public Works. We need people.
Now, is there barriers to our employment with just the wages that are being paid? Or do we need to look at those wages? I know we have a compensation study that we're working on finalizing.
Yes, we do. We are having meetings all day, every day this week to discuss our compensation study and hope to have some preliminary plans in way very quickly. But we do need help. I can't say that enough. If someone is looking for employment, they should look at Shawnee County.
Questions for Angela? I'll make a motion to approve the two account, or payroll assistant positions to be filled.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Angela. Our next item.
Item D, Parks and Recreation, number one, consider approval of request to solicit bids to repair the Howie Greenhouse at Lake Shawnee at an estimated cost of $33,732.50 with funding available from the park's operation budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Beaton, Horticulture Supervisor, Parks and Rec Department. In front of you, I am asking to solicit bids to repair the Howie Greenhouse, which is located off of 41st and Howie Road out around Lake Shawnee. The polyfilm and everything is in dire need of repair and replacement, along with a few other boards and everything, and brackets and everything, so I'm just asking permission to solicit bids where we can go out and get some ideas how much it would be to repair that properly.
This was constructed in 2012?
I believe so. That's what I was able to find out, that it was constructed in 2012. I have two other structures out at the lake currently that are in worse shape than this one. This is the biggest house I have out there right now. Based off of, I know I have the greenhouse at Gage Park as well. I can produce about 80,000 to 90,000 plants out there. This house here will be holding another 50,000 to 60,000 plants that we can produce out of that. So that's putting us where typically you're producing about 130,000 to 140,000 plants a year for the county.
The polyfilm that you have, is that what you would like to go back with as a replacement?
Right now, because the framework of this house is still in good shape, that's what I would have to go back with. Eventually, hopefully, we can update and everything on down the road.
If you were to update, what would you want to update with?
There's a few options out there. I know the house over at Gage is made out of glass, and there's a few more options that are a little more economical, but I'd have to do some more checking on that.
How much of our horticulture is produced in-house as opposed to purchased from local vendors and then put into the parks or the different areas?
Hundred percent of our annuals are produced in-house. We don't buy any annuals. It's some of the perennials and shrubs that we order in.
And so how key to your ability to have those annuals put into the parks is this request?
It's very key. If not, we won't be able to produce enough annuals this year to accommodate what we need in our park systems.
Questions? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval. I'll second.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item.
Item D two, consider approval of request to solicit bids for alarm monitoring services and repairs for various department facilities with funding available from the corresponding department's budgets.
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Louie, Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. Before you today is requesting to go out for bid for our alarm system. We haven't done this since 2015. We just think it's a good time, the contract's coming due, to just see how the prices are being competitive. I have talked with Nellna. She has a couple buildings that we will add to our list to help the facilities around here. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I do have Park Chief Police Mike Cope, who oversees this, if you have detailed questions regarding the systems we're using.
Any questions for Randy or Chief Cope? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item.
Item D three, consider authorization and execution of contract C285-2021, the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism Grant Agreement, to proceed with the Fool's Landing Boat Ramp Project with $40,000 in grant assistance with KWPT and $46,932 utilized in the Parks and Recreation Building Maintenance Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Hammer, Parks and Recreation. Good news, the grant that we applied for in May, we got it, the full amount, $40,000. So just wanted to let you know that and get approval to move on to the next step of making repairs and upgrades to that park.
First, let's talk about the location. This is the boat ramp that is east of Topeka?
Yep, 4400 Seward.
Okay, and so that is east of the Oakland Expressway?
It is, about a mile.
And so is this the downstream boat ramp that people would be using to exit if they were doing a boat trip from downtown?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a pretty popular takeout spot if you're putting in at the Call River Park upstream there or something. It's a good location for takeout.
And what all is the grant going to go through and do?
We have plans right now in our project budget to add new asphalt to the driveway and the parking lot. Hopefully, maybe make the parking lot a bit bigger. Add an electronic gate up near the road to control some of what goes on there. And then we will probably be doing quite a bit of grade work around the ramp itself to improve the drainage and not have so much mud problems on the ramp when the water comes up.
I know that the gate was a pretty big item since it's fairly isolated and in the evening there can be maybe activity we don't want on that boat ramp.
Yeah, I kind of ran that past the Wildlife and Parks guys to see what they thought about it. But they've got pretty much the same gate at Call River, and he said it's there for the same reason that we're talking about. So they had no problem with it, and so I hope we can do it.
Do we have any lighting out there?
We added one POW light a year or two ago down, had Evergy put one down closer to the parking lot. And it's been, hopefully, we won't need it anymore if we can keep that place closed at night. But I'm sure it'll stay there. But we won't add any more lighting. I don't anticipate.
Is the ramp itself still good and functioning and everything?
Yeah, it seems to be all right. And my understanding is that Wildlife and Parks owns the ramp itself. So we have to deal with the park and the land and so forth. But if the ramp ever needed work, I would hope that they would deal with that.
Other questions? Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Mays, all second. Second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Our next item.
Item D four, consider the ratification request for advisory advocate board pending the reappointments of Jill Ledbetter, Terry Roberts, Judy Gatewood, Casey Clark, and Ty Heistin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Louie, Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. At the end of this month, Mr. Ledbetter, Terry Roberts, Judy Gatewood, and Casey Clark, as well as Ty Heistin, term ends, and they're happy to serve another term on our board. They've all done a great job on our board, and we look forward to working with them again for another three-year term. Be glad to answer.
Might recognize, there are four vacant positions with Councilmember Emerson, Councilmember Vadia, myself, and Commissioner Rippon. I know that I'm actively working on filling my appointment. I'm sure Commissioner Rippon, you are as well. Any questions regarding the reappointment of those individuals?
So you're saying that I'm the only one up here that doesn't have a vacancy on there?
Attaboy. Gold star.
Just so you guys know, I also appointed Ty Heistin when I was in the city council.
Ms. Beck, can you please give Commissioner Mays a gold star?
A gold star. Well, I was thinking, there's got to be a song title you can come up with.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Mays. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Our next item.
Item E, County Counselor, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C286-2021, Change Orders Number 16 with McGowan Gordon Construction LLC for items relating to the Stormont Vale Event Center renovation project totaling $86,262,000 utilized in contingency funds set aside for the project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Crowell, Shawnee County Counselor. I'm seeking your approval of Change Order 16 on the Stormont Vale Event Center project. This is the second to the last change order. This one picks up most of the remaining odds and ends that were required, either on final inspections or some punch lists and work like that. There will be one more change order, but it will be a change order to reduce the GMP. We'll be getting money back on the project for a couple of allowances that were built into the contract that we ultimately didn't need to use. So this is second to the last change order, and we'll have one more giving us money back, and that should close out the money piece of the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So while this is increasing the amount that's being spent today, in the end, we will be under budget for the overall project?
I think so. We're still, Betty and I have been, and Jennifer have been following this closely, and we're running down the final what-ifs on everything that was involved in the project to confirm that. As I stand here today, I believe that's the case.
Other questions for Mr. Crowell?
Is the landscaping finished now? I didn't know if they had some seeding here yet to do, but...
I can't answer that completely. Kellen might know the answer to that question. I actually drove by a few days ago and saw them working, so I would hesitate to say they were.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Kellen Seitz, Spectre of Venue Management, Stormont Vale Event Center. Most of the landscaping is completed. They are doing some subsurface trenching work for irrigation lines on that connection between the Hotel Topeka at City Center and the Stormont Vale Event Center on that little green island pad there, and running those trenching lines over to our irrigation system, which is centrally located in that center island. But for the most part, for the long and short of it, yes, we are pretty much completed. They are doing some additional seeding projects, but some of that won't start until we get closer to the fall so they don't burn that seed and get some of those other elements added.
I was noticing a couple of the traffic islands, as you're driving in, they'd be on the south side that are lacking trees. It's noticeable that those two islands, or maybe three, that don't have trees. I was wondering if we could...
Yeah, I don't know that there is any plan to add additional trees to those islands, but that is something that I can follow up with the County Councilman.
It just looks odd that a couple of those islands don't have trees where the rest of them do.
Sure.
Anyway, that was it.
Other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Jim, you might want to stay right there because if there's a question on the next item. Our next item.
Item F, Audit Finance, number one, consider approval of resolution number 2021-60 to exceed the revenue neutral rate in its property tax levy for the tax year of 2020 for Shawnee County. Oh, 2022, sorry about that. Betty had heart attack while I said that. Sorry, Betty.
Okay, so Betty, as you're getting that up, this is the first year for the new legislation regarding a revenue tax, or revenue neutral rate. And we have gone through a number of steps regarding this, including a notice of intent to exceed, publication of intent to exceed, public hearing on notice of intent to exceed. And now, Betty, we are to this resolution, so can you tell us about...
Yes, Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. I have pulled up the worksheet of where we left off on August 5th with the proposed 2022 budget. It does show that we would exceed the revenue neutral rate. If there's any other additional information, I'll be happy to provide it.
And then on the resolution, it did calculate the revenue neutral rate at 46.540, and that was with the assistance of our county clerk and...
The county clerk actually calculates it.
Yeah, there's no assistance. Well, I take that back. I take that back. Lori Ray.
All right, gold star for you and Lori Ray.
Just in case you want to know, where the credit goes.
The clerk's office calculated the revenue.
And the blame as well, but that's okay.
Are there any questions regarding the resolution? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-60. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Our next item. Thank you.
Item G, Stormont Vale Event Center, number one, consider authorization and execution of contract C287-2021, a partnership advertising agreement with Crown Distributors at Stormont Vale Event Center for the years 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kellen Seitz again, Spectre of Venue Management, Stormont Vale Event Center. The request before you today is to enter into a partnership advertising agreement with Crown Distributors as our beer sponsor and advertiser for the facility. This contract will start in August of 2021 and run through July of 2024 for a total of three calendar years from start to finish on that contract. The contract does have significant revenue impact for the facility. We are looking at revenues of $171,000 over the course of the three-year term of the contract. Happy to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the contract.
The money that's paid as a result of this contract, where does it go?
So all of our sponsorship and advertising monies that we collect on behalf of the facility go directly into the operating budget. They're built that way to help reduce the operational subsidy that it takes to operate the facility. We do have benchmarks in our revenue and partnerships departments to hit and achieve goals. This is one of those partnerships that will help us get to that benchmark.
Questions regarding the contract? I'll move for approval. Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Our next item.
Item H, Emergency Management, number one, consider approval of resolution number 2021-62 to extend the local disaster emergency declaration through October 28, 2021, unless sooner revoked by the board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dusty Nichols, Emergency Management. I think you are aware of what's going on. Obviously, we put the emergency resolution in last week. We had seven days, and I'm requesting the extension to October, end of October, to equal our Incident Command Team resolution.
Dusty, I know that previously you and I had discussed about whether we should have it go to October or whether we should just have it go straight to the end of the year. Do you have any thoughts as to why maybe just have it come to October instead of the end of the year?
Sure. In general, I'd like to have these things match up so we're not up here continually leapfrogging each other. So if we can make these match, the Incident Command Team is set up to go through October 28. I'd like to have this match up as well. So if we're at that point, we can reassess not only the team's involvement, but the disaster resolution because we're probably going hand in hand at that point. If we have to continue this team, more than likely, we're going to be needing that resolution in place as well.
And I know that I've received a number of emails and inquiries. The declaration does not create any mandates.
No, 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 no. It opens doors. It does signal to the state, as I mentioned before. But it opens doors not just for funding. I think most people tie this to funding. It's not just funding, it's resources. As you guys are well aware from Dr. Carnegie and Dr. Anderson and everybody else that's putting out those scorecards, we have resource shortages. We have nurse shortages. We have PPE stuff that's potentially a morgue space. Who knows what could be coming up in the near future? So we want to be at front of that so we can request those and get those resources here before they're absolutely needed. So this does open that door, or open those doors, to get assistance from the state, mutual aid, and so forth.
But it does not create any new mandates?
No, there's no mandates. That's a totally, and Jim can jump in. There's no mandate attached to this whatsoever.
Any questions from the Commissioners regarding this item?
No. I just want to say also, it's my understanding that a lot of other counties, most other counties have this already in place. We're one of the only counties that actually allowed ours to expire around last year.
That is correct. Most of the time, these declarations are tied to resources. Shawnee County and Topeka has a lot of resources. We're also a regional hospital county, and those resources, when other counties around us need help, we're usually the ones to provide that mutual aid. The counties around us, for the most part, have declared last year and left their declarations in place. In June, we were, again, looking pretty good. We were seeing caseloads go down. We're seeing a lot of easing of those resource needs. Delta came back up. And as you guys know, we had to keep our Incident Command Team going. And then at this point, especially last week with the reports coming from the hospitals... And then at this point, especially last week with the reports coming from the hospitals, the resource shortages we're hearing, the stress on ambulance, the stress on everything, I wanted to be ahead of the game, which is why I've signed that, or asked Commissioner Cook to sign that seven-day resolution to bring this in front of you, or declaration to bring this resolution in front of you.
Any other?
Did you make a motion, Art?
Not yet. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Note that it reflects the passes three to zero.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Our next item.
Item I Commission Number One. Consider the request to execute a rebranding campaign for Shawnee County logo, flag, and all marketing materials with the intent of a county resolution at a later date once the campaign is finished.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Monahan, Public Information Officer. Well, it's been about 20 years since our county last updated its logo and reviewed any other branding guidelines. So our Public Relations Committee has identified several gaps and mainly inconsistency with our current county logo. Therefore, we decided to create a rebranding task force to bridge these gaps and kind of, and refresh our, and refresh the logo we currently have. Our task force includes Maria Latandres with Human Resources, Andrew Mumma with the IT, Stephanie Coleman with the Commission, and myself. Thus far, we have identified these four goals and which we will put into these three phases. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I note in your memorandum, it identified that this is being done in-house, so that it would cost $0.
Correct.
So instead of hiring an agency to do the rebranding for us, we are working from within to work that up?
That is correct, with, with the current rebranding task force that we have.
And then as part of this, there would be a resolution in the future, since our county code dictates the logo, the style, and the mannerisms. And so we would need to update some resolutions at some future point?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I, I think it's great that, I mean, I think it's great for us to go back and look at it. And I think that it is probably long overdue, going for 20 years without updating or looking at how you advertise or promote your business or company. And so I appreciate the work that the task force is putting into this, and I am fully in favor of it.
Was that a motion?
I think it's, I don't know, Madam Clerk, do we need a motion? But I will make a motion to have a rebranding campaign.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Go forth.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item I Two. Consider approval of Resolution Number 2021-61 establishing the 2022 holidays.
This is a regular item that comes before the commission, where we would go through our holidays for 2022. I might note that we do have the additional holiday of Juneteenth that we approved earlier this year. And so this is the first year having that item as part of our annual holidays for 2022.
Bet you left my birthday off.
No gold star for you, Jim. All right. So are there any questions?
Did we drop any holidays?
No, we did not delete any holidays.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll move them for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Reflected, it passes three to zero. Thank you. Our next item.
Item I Three. Discussion of the 2022 Budget.
This is, as we discussed on the 23rd at the public hearing, we have fulfilled all of our steps to work towards finalization. I don't know that we may or may not have a final budget after today, but we are picking back up with our discussion. For those who are watching at home or those that are listening or in person, we go through a process where department heads will prepare a budget. That budget is then sent to the county commissioners for their review. There may be discussions with the department heads about their budget. We would also have a public hearing where there's a budget presentation to the commissioners by each department. After that public hearing and presentation by each department, there's an initial discussion by the commission where we refine the budget for the next year. Then we let that, put that on hold so the public would have two weeks to review the proposed preliminary budget. There was then a public hearing on the 23rd where the public could add comment to that budget. And here we are today then, as we work towards the finalization. Betty, is there anything I've left off?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. I have pulled up the worksheet again, and this is where we left off on August.
Commissioners, I might ask if the, after that two-week period of reflection, are there any items that we want to adjust or change?
I, I don't know. I mean, so we, this is tough, you know, honestly, because we look at this, and, and I know that we've been hearing, you know, I mean, go back to the summer, and all of the, the talk about how our lifeguards are underpaid, you know, and that type of thing. And, and the expenses continue to go up, not just there, but, you know, in a lot of other places as well. And so it's tough. But, you know, we, we heard from folks the other night that talked about our reserves. I mean, I would be open to maybe using a little bit of reserves. Obviously, we still want to keep that cushion there to some extent. But, you know, maybe if we took a million dollars from reserves and added that, I think it would lessen the burden a little bit.
Let's have a discussion about that, reserves, Betty, if we can, and where we're at as far as the reserves and so for the public. That did come up during the public hearing about our reserves, what level we have. I know that we do have a resolution, county resolution regarding reserves and our goals.
We do. We have a, a reserve policy. And our reserve policy for our general fund is that we have a minimum fund balance of 20% and a fund balance goal of 25%. We are currently pretty much right at our goal. We actually have $278,220 over our fund balance goal.
In the past, when we have gotten to a excess over our goal, we have taken that excess towards applying it to the Stormont Vale Event Center renovations and to parks and rec.
Our policy also says that if we're going to use reserves, we, the recommended items are more one-time items. You know, whether it's a project, or we use it for deferred maintenance, we used it for the Stormont Vale Event Center renovation project. It can, you know, those types of items, because if you're using your reserves for operational, then the next year, you're, you've put yourself in a position for the next budget year that you're starting out basically in the hole, because you're starting out the next year with a budget that is already above your revenue. So that's, the policy recommends that reserves are used for one-time expenditures.
Betty, this is your ninth year of employment with Shawnee County?
It is.
And so let's talk about when you came on as the Audit Finance Director, where the county's reserves were at and how we got to this point.
You know, I think I even have a chart for that. Well, I guess it's not a chart. But I do have some numbers. Didn't know you were going to ask this, but I am. Have it right here. In 2012, we had our reserves, well, let me get over here a little bit so we can see the, there we go. In 2010, we had $12,347 in reserves. By 2011, it was down to $8,505, and then 2012, $9,707. And during this time, you can see the budget continued to increase. So as your budget continues to increase, you know, then your percentage is obviously going to go down. And then for 2014, that was the budget that we actually had a mill levy increase and also had a department, we also cut department budgets also. So you can kind of see in 16, we had an excess, and in 17, we had an excess. So then in 18, we actually transferred $6 million of the, of the excess revenue. And, and as we talked, we used that for the Stormont Vale Event Center, and we used it for deferred maintenance for parks and rec. They each received $3 million. Then in 2020, we actually used $5,423,000 of excess reserves, mostly from CRF funds towards the 2021 budget. Or, you know, we, we used $2.5 million that was at the time of the budget last year, and then also additional salary increases that were needed for 2021 was about another $3 million.
Betty, if we had not adjusted back in 2012, 2013, and we had continued to spend more money and draw down those reserves, what would be the impact for that as far as Shawnee County's overall financial condition?
Well, I mean, yeah, as long as you're spending more money than's coming in, your reserves are going to go down. That affects you in many ways. One of the ways it affects you is your credit rating. You know, as your credit rating goes down, we've actually been, been able to improve our credit rating since I've come. And, and we are at an AA1 credit rating, which is an excellent credit rating for a county our size. And that helps keep our insurance, our interest costs down on our bondings.
AA1 is a credit rating. You said that's, is that the highest that we can go, or is there a higher?
I think for a credit, for a county our size, I think it's probably the highest that we would go.
And how does that compare to other entities in Topeka, such as like the city? Are we higher than the city of Topeka's?
We are higher. I don't have theirs here in front of me right now, but, but our credit rating is higher than the city. It's higher than the, the state too, I believe, last I knew.
How does that credit rating help the county?
Well, it, like I say, it keeps our interest rates down on our bonding. You know, we've been able to refinance much of our, of our bonds that we have had in the past. We have been able to refinance them and get them down to lower rates. And then when we're looking at new bonding, like, you know, we had the bonding for the Stormont Vale Event Center. And, you know, any, any new bonding we do, the lower, the higher your credit rating, the lower your interest rate, because when an investor is looking at that, that tells them there is less risk involved. So we are able to get that money. If there's less risk for the investor, then they're, they're willing to, you know, so we are able to, to pay less interest. They're willing to receive less interest because the risk is lower.
When the county set its fund policy at 25%, we had some speakers on Monday that suggested that that was overstated and that perhaps the scholarly thought is that a entity such as Shawnee County should not have a bond or reserves of more than 15%.
There is not a set number given anywhere. When I was setting this policy, I went to many sources and, and looked at different places. You know, the, the bonding, even the, the bond rating companies will not give you a set amount that they expect you to have. One of the sources I used was GFBA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, and kind of went with their recommendations. That fund policy does look at different percentages for different types of funds also. You don't apply the same percentage to all the different types of funds, because our general fund is what most of our operational costs come out of. One other thing you have to look at, in Shawnee County, our general fund is our, obviously our primary fund, but there is a lot of other municipal organizations that have many more funds than we do. A lot of them have a separate fund for debt service. They have a separate fund for other items too. And we have them all together into one general fund. So that is also, you know, kind of something that, that plays into the, the mix also.
Last year, I believe, was the first year as a commissioner that we spent, or we had planned on spending more money than we were bringing in. And we actually drew from our reserves to do that.
Yes.
And how much did we draw from our reserves last year?
Well, as, as part of the initial, initial budget, as part of the initial budget process, it was voted to take $2.5 million. I say take it out of the reserves. It was just that, you know, you were going to use those, those reserves. So that was $2.5 million. Then later throughout 2020, when we saw that there was a need to raise salaries during 2021, there was an additional almost $3 million that was used from reserves to cover those items, those salaries for 2021. So basically a total of $5,423,000.
So that was more money that was spent by Shawnee County Commission than they had brought in as revenue?
For 20, yes.
And now through our CARES funding, we were able to offset some of those?
Yeah, and I did look at, at that. You know, one of the things that we keep reserves for are emergencies. Obviously, 2020, we were in a pandemic emergency. And so I did look back on that. And we received in CARES Act money, the coronavirus relief funds, we received $36,763,000. Of that money, we allocated out to external sources, whether it was school districts, cities, organizations, you know, community organizations. Anyway, the total that we allocated out was $21,515,000. So we used internally for the county use $15,248,023. So that is federal funds that we had available to use and did use for county uses during the pandemic last year. If we would not have had those federal funds come in for the county to use, we would have been, our reserves would be in a much different place right now. And, and that was great that that was, you know, that, that it did come in. We were able to use that not only for ourselves, but for other organizations and other municipalities that needed it.
Commissioner Mays, do you have questions about our reserves or where we're at, or?
All right. I don't know. We, I mean.
I appreciate that no, no governing body looks forward or is in favor of raising taxes. We're all very acutely aware of the impact that raising taxes has on the public, that there are many people that are struggling day to day. I also look at that the county went for eight years without any adjustment to its mill levy, that the only adjustment came in the property valuation, of which we as a county commission have no control over. Mr. Baumann operates independently of the county commission in setting those appraised values. But I think that the time has come. The signal was made last year when we had to spend more money than we had, that we have to rebalance. The other alternative is making cuts to our departments, of which many are already stretched very thin, and the, taking care of our employees. We have a wage compensation study that we're working on. We know that we have vacancies across the board in the county that we're struggling to fill. And so I think that we've worked very diligently. I don't know that anybody is. I don't know that anybody is truly happy with the budget, that not ever, no one got what they asked for. There, there were cuts to everybody's proposal, and, or most everybody's proposal, and we've come up with a budget that I believe is sustainable for the county for at least, hopefully, the foreseeable future, so we don't have to do another mill levy, and we can go for, again, maybe not eight years, but a period of time without adjustment.
You know, it's the amount of the increase that's bugging me as much as anything. And if we were to take 1 million out of our reserve, would it affect our bond ratings? Do we know?
We don't know. I, I, you know, we don't set the ratings. An independent bond rating company comes in and does that.
Yeah. I don't know that 1 million would damage us in any way, but...
Betty, can we look at, if you were to take 1 million from reserves?
Let me get this set up here. I do have it, so that I can do that.
And looking at how that would affect the mill levy, and also looking at how it would impact the homeowner.
Sorry, give me a minute here to get my, get this to do it here.
We are in a kind of a strange economic times. We're, we're seeing a lot of inflation all of a sudden. I don't know if that will roll back in any fashion. I think some of it's a little artificial, because we don't have a good supply line, like we'd say in lumber. It, it went way up, now it's coming down a little bit. Maybe we'll see gas go down as we get things rolling a little better. It's, it's just hard to predict what's going to happen, but...
So you were asking about 1 million?
1 million.
Okay.
And then looking at what that would adjust your, your mill levy to, and then also looking at the adjustment.
Okay, that would adjust the, the mill levy to 51.518, or the estimated mill levy. And that would bring the increase to 3.361 mills?
But as to a person with a $100,000 house, again, I, I think it's important we put this in the context of our, our constituents.
38.65.
So we went from $44.91 increase for the year to $38.65.
$6.26, $6.26.
Decrease.
Yes.
On 100, that would be the...
On a $100,000 residential house.
Right.
Because commercial, you know, has different assessed value, or assessed percentage.
And again, the, the taxpayers of, and again, the county does not have franchise fees. The county does not have sales tax. The county relies 87% of our budget comes from property tax to fund our resources. That increase of the $44.91 over a year, monthly amount, is $3.74 monthly increase to your property tax. So is $3.74 increasing your property tax monthly an unfair burden to a person with a $100,000 house?
I know it looks like a small increase. $3 isn't much, but when you look at the total of what it is for a year, it looks significant.
It's an increase of $45.
I mean, they're, they're total tax, not, not the increase, the total tax they're paying. It's, it's pretty sizable, especially compared to some other communities.
We're also in a housing market right now that is very hot, and I don't know how long that hot market will sustain.
I don't either.
Well, we're also in a situation where commercial real estate isn't going up to the same rate that residential is. And so I think when people see their property values go up, you know, a lot, a lot of times people don't think about commercial real estate and the crisis there as well. So, you know, we, we talk about inflation, and inflation, you know, in governmental entities that can take in sales tax, that inflation gets accounted for. What it does for us when we see inflation is the cost of the goods that we use goes up, but we don't see that additional revenue that would come with sales tax. You know, it, we're in a bad spot right now, and we need to perhaps start having some tough conversations about the services that we provide. I mean, you know, I mentioned the lifeguard salaries earlier, but our swimming pools are all losing money.
Well...
I mean, it's, and it, and if we raise the, the cost of the lifeguard salaries, which, you know, I'm all in favor of, I mean, it, it just makes them more expensive. And I'm not proposing that we close pools or anything. I'm just saying, like, there are, there are things that our citizens are expecting us to provide that are costly.
And again, eight years without an increase to your mill levy. Last year, in a conversation with Audit Finance Director Greiner, that was the first year that we dipped into our reserves. And I believe the comment was made is the first time you dip into it is the hardest, because the reserves have been, that was a major goal for eight years, for the county commission to restore our financial credit. We were looking at really going down a very bad path in financial stability, where we could not do our projects, could not get the bonding. We would not have been able to do the Stormont Vale Event Center. It would have cost us more money to do the renovations to the Stormont Vale Event Center, but for that credit rating. And for me, it is very key that we keep our, our reserves at that 25%. And so I know that, I recognize what you're saying, but dipping into the reserves is setting a bad precedent for the county commission, that we're just going to keep drawing down and drawing down and drawing down, and once you start that process, it's going to get easier and easier to take away from that. And so I think there are some things that you have to mark as being off limits. Keeping your financial wherewithal and keeping your credit is an off limit. And so if we're going to be looking to take $1 million, then we need to cut $1 million off that budget. And that means we're going to cut $1 million from our departments, and Parks and Recs is first. They're the only nonessential service we have. I say that, and I'm looking right at Mr. Laurent, the Parks Director, when I'm saying that. And what I mean by that is, we have to have roads. We have to have a jail. We have to have a sheriff. We have to have elections. We have to have an HR department. We have to have IT. We have to have the audit finance. We have to have a clerk. We have to have emergency management. We have to have a health department. The only thing we don't have to have is a park, but it is the number one thing that our public expects to be able to use. If I'm mistaken, which I'm mistaken a lot in life, please help me see a different path.
You could take a little bite out of everyone, rather than saying, oh, we have taken out of public works. No, I, I, what if everybody just took a little?
Every department head made their presentation to us, every single department head, and said, I have more needs than I have resources, except for, I do not believe the treasurer asked for any increase. And I don't believe that the, there were, Betty, help me out, there may have been...
Well, when you say they didn't ask for an increase, when you're looking, we started from the flat budget. The flat budget already included increases, because it included one step and 1%, you know, 1%, or one step and 1% cost of living increase for every employee as of July 1. So even though we started, maybe they didn't ask more than the flat budget, but the flat budget still has increases in it.
Based on the discussion here today, I am not gathering the sensation from my fellow commissioners that we're ready to pass a final budget.
I don't think so.
We're not.
So let's, we're going to defer any action today. We will then have this back for discussion on the 30th, Monday, and we will resume discussion of our '22 budget on Monday, the 30th. That's a motion made by Commissioner Cook. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion made to defer any action or further discussion to August the 30th. Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, reflect that it passes 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Our next item.
Item 5, Administrative Communications.
This is an opportunity for any department head or member of the public to address the commission on any item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director with the Health Department. I have two items I'd like to announce today. One is to let the public and everyone know that we have resumed our Tuesday evening clinic hours. This is for our 10th Street location and our WIT clinic. So hours on Tuesday are 10 to 7:00. We did that to accommodate parents and, and clients that need those hours outside of our normal 8 to 5 hours. So again, those opened on Tuesday. And then also, this past Monday, the 23rd, we have two health department employees that were recognized for the 20 under 40 class this year. So we have our county health officer, Dr. Erin Locke, and we have Derek Flerlog, who's our infectious disease division manager. So we're very proud of them, feel their awards are very deserving to them. Their awards banquet, in which it will be publicly recognized, will be on November 11th.
Congratulations to those two employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Mays?
I'll just echo what Teresa said. You know, congratulations to both Dr. Locke and Derek. Couple that with the, I believe you had three employees that were in leadership greater to Topeka this year. I mean, it just goes to show the quality of our employees here, and I appreciate everything everyone does, not just them, but congratulations to them.
Absolutely. Commissioner Rippon?
I have nothing to add.
Nor do I, and so our next item.
Item 6, Executive Sessions.
We do have a need for an executive session. We have several items. It's been some time since we've had an executive session, so I think we've piled it up for a longer one today, so I'm going to go through. We have consultation with an attorney for the body or agency, which we deem privileged in the attorney-client relationship, where we will be discussing an update as to the land and trail in Burlington, Northern Santa Fe. That would be for 10 minutes. We're going to be discussing also with our attorney, the status of SB 40 and its impact on Shawnee County. That would be for 15 minutes. We have a discussion regarding preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. That would be for 15 minutes. We have matters relating to, sorry, personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and that is to discuss our preliminary discussions of the compensation wage study for 30 minutes. And then a item with personnel matters of non-elected personnel, discussion of COVID and its impact to the continuity, continuity of county operations, and that would be for a period of 10 minutes, for a total of 1 hour and 20 minutes. And that's a motion made by Commissioner Cook. Is there a second?
I got it.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, reflect that it passes 3 to 0. Let's start at 10:10.
Yeah, I'll just have to sign.
All right. No action is anticipated from the executive session. We are in executive session.
Mr. Cook, you're the Shawnee County Clerk.
Commissioner Cook, you're the county clerk.
We are back from executive session. No action was taken. We are adjourned.
We got one of these windows is getting really faded.